Good evening. Today is Tuesday, November 24th, 2020. I'm Heather Papley, Clerk for the City of Manistee. The City Council's November 24th, 2020 Special Meeting and Work Session, being conducted remotely, where all members of the City Council are in separate locations and not at City Hall Council Chambers, will be called to order by Mayor Roger Zelinski. As always, this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast on Manistee TV Cable Channels 189, 190, and available at manistetv.org. City Council and city staff will have video and audio available for this meeting and the following work session. Members of the public will be audio only. The microphones of all members of the City Council, City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk will always be live unless there's an audio disruption. Mayor Zelinski, we are ready to proceed with the meeting.
Thank you, Heather. We'll call the meeting to order. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachmann.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Mayor Zelinski.
Here.
Councilmember Sipsek.
Here.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
I think he's still muted.
I'm going to try to unmute him here. Councilmember Grabowski, can you unmute yourself, please? There you go.
Okay.
Perfect. And Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Here.
City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
DPW Director.
Here.
Finance Director.
Here.
Police Chief.
Here.
Fire Chief.
Here.
City Engineer.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. Citizens comments on agenda-related items. Each person waiting in the virtual waiting room will be called individually by the City Clerk by the last four digits of their telephone number. Individuals will be asked if they have a comment or if they are passing. It's very important that those giving comments have a good phone connection and no sound or noise in the background. Otherwise, there will be disruptive audio. If the issue cannot be corrected by the caller, we'll move on to the next person in line. We'll now take public comments. The meeting discussion topics for those who do not have an agenda are: Consideration of approving a USDA Rural Development Form 442-7 Operating Budget and Projected Cash Flow. Heather? Do we have anybody that would like to comment?
Okay, I'll have to go through everybody that's here and see if they want to comment on this agenda. Telephone number ending in 9908, do you have a comment on this agenda item?
No, I do not.
Telephone number 1619, do you have a comment or would you like to pass? Okay, moving on to the next one. Telephone number 7502, do you have a comment?
I do not.
Thank you. Telephone number 1981, do you have a comment? Okay. Telephone number 7302, do you have a comment? Telephone number 5863, do you have a comment?
I do not.
Thank you. Telephone number 4175, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Heather. I will pass today. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me make sure I haven't missed anybody. There's some more. Let me see here. There's a bunch on here, so... I have Tom. This is Tom's Galaxy. Do you have a comment? Vicky, do you have a comment?
No.
Thank you. I'm hoping I didn't miss anybody. There's a lot... Oh, here's one. Diane, do you have a comment?
No.
Thank you. If I have missed you and you're here for public comment and you would like to unmute yourself and let me know real quick, that would be great. During that, I... Do you have a comment, sir? You're muted.
No comment for this.
Thank you. Okay, I think we are all set with that. I'm not hearing any more comments, Mayor.
Thank you, Heather. Consideration of approving... This is under new business. Consideration of approving USDA Rural Development Form 442-7 Operating Budget and Projected Cash Flow. As part of the process of obtaining a low-interest wastewater rural development, the city is required to submit a Form 442-7 Operating Budget and Projected Cash Flow that has been approved by City Council. At this time, council could take action to approve USDA Rural Development Form 442-7 Operating Budget and Projected Cash Flow, and authorize the Mayor and City Clerk to execute the form. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion. Mick Schabowski.
Is there support? Second.
Support.
Any discussion? Questions? While you're done, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachmann.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsek.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Concerns and comments. Citizens comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance via phone shall be recognized by the City Clerk for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Each person in the virtual waiting room will be called by the last four digits of their telephone number. Heather?
Okay. Let me start at the top here. Telephone number 7887, do you have a comment?
Yes. Is this regarding the marijuana licenses?
This is open comment in the special meeting, and then we will have the work session following.
Okay. I just talked to a lot of the council members earlier, and I really think that all the work that these other people have went through and everything...
Sir, I'm going to have to stop you. I will need your telephone number and... Or, excuse me, your name and address for the comment section.
Okay. My name is Paul Adamski, 5915 Tomkey Road. And am I okay to go, Heather?
Yes.
After all the work and effort that we put in, you know, the last year in October at City Hall and all the extra expense that was added to us doing things on a first-come, first-served basis and standing in line, I just think that it's kind of a slap in the face, like I've said before, that we went through all this work and then you just turn around and open it up to whoever wants to do it, after all the effort that we put into it. One thing on another note is that I'm the supervisor also in Brown Township, and we have opened the township up. Since we've done that, we're finding out that all these license fees and everything else are restricted only for the use of researching, meetings, or whatever regarded to the marijuana. MTA? I haven't heard back from the lawyer yet as far as the licensing fees and everything, but our auditor and everything else is saying that these are restricted funds because my whole intention out there was I'm going to get some roads paved and I'm going to get in. I'm... I think that you, the council needs, or the city attorney, needs to look into this a little bit and make sure that what you want to do with these funds is legitimate. That's about all I have to say. I don't want to take up any more of your time. I've talked to most of you members before. I appreciate what you do, and I just hope you take my comments and look into it. And thank you for your time.
Okay. Telephone number 9908. Do you have a comment?
Yes, this is in regards to spending funds regarding the...
I need your name and...
Sorry.
For public comment. Name and address, please.
Scott Phillips, 3033 Little River Road. And I'm under the assumption that this is for spending funds, the city funds, on whether or not to add more licenses for marijuana facilities. Is that correct?
Well, we are in the... We are having a special meeting first, and then, yes, the next, we will be having a work session where there will be public comment on that item.
Okay. Because I'm... Maybe I should wait for my comment because I'm utterly confused about this. I'll wait... I'll wait for the public...
You want to wait for the work session? Okay.
Yeah, I'll wait for the work session.
Okay.
Because what I say doesn't matter in regards to this, and I have something to say. So I'll wait for the work session. Thank you. Sorry.
Number 1619. Do you have a comment? Number 7502, do you have a comment?
I'm here to participate in the work session.
Okay. Diane, do you have a comment?
I'm for the work session.
Okay. Vicky, do you have a comment?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Number 5863, do you have a comment?
I'm here for the work session also. Thank you.
Okay. Have I missed anyone that wishes to make public comments now? Okay. Mayor, I believe we're ready to move on to the next.
We want to move on to...
Officials and staff?
Yep.
City Manager?
Nothing at this time.
City Attorney?
Nothing, Heather. Thank you.
DPW Director?
Nothing.
Finance Director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Police Chief?
I have nothing, Heather. Thank you.
Fire Chief?
Nothing, Heather. Thank you.
City Engineer?
Nothing, Heather. Thank you.
And then we'll go on to Councilmember Beaton.
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Bachmann?
Nothing. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Shemansky?
Nothing at this time. Thank you, Heather.
Councilmember Grabowski?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Sipsek?
Nothing. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Mayor Zelinski?
I have nothing, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Have a motion? Or adjourn?
We will now begin the City Council's November 24th, 2020 Work Session. Mayor Zelinski, we are ready to proceed with the meeting.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Work session items. This is a public comment on work session-related items. Each person in the virtual waiting room will be called individually by the City Clerk by the last four digits of their telephone number. Individuals will be asked if they have a comment or if they wish... Or if they are passing. It is very important that those giving comments have a good phone connection and no sound or noise whatsoever in the background. Otherwise, there will be disruptive audio. If the issue cannot be corrected by the caller, we will move on to the next person in line. We'll now take public comments. The work session discussion topics for those that do not have an agenda are: Discussion on development of property on Water Street and River Street; Discussion on refuge building in the DDA District; and Discussion on marijuana licenses. The City Clerk will now take over the... And accept public comments on work session agenda items. Heather?
Okay, I ask that members of the public, when I call your number, if you would unmute yourself and state your name and address. Well, I'll try to get through everybody that I see here. So I'm going to start with telephone number 9908. Telephone number 9908, do you have a comment?
Can you hear me?
I can now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Please state your name and address.
My name is Scott Phillips. I'm at 3033 Little River Road. This is in regards to... Well, in regards to a lot. I'm a little bit confused in regards to quite a bit in this town, considering we just moved here about four years ago. I just don't see... I don't see a long-term plan or... To achieve your goals of housing, retail, entertainment, infrastructure. Councilman, who's ever listening, the infrastructure in this town is terrible. If you'd like to get retail or new business in this town, that's, you know, economic development 101. You need good infrastructure. You know, I'd like to know what new businesses... I mean, I've been coming up here for more than five, six years now, and, you know, this town is ripe for development, and I just don't see it happening. I don't know what the DDA, what the council people are doing to entice new businesses to come here. And now you're talking about adding more licensing for marijuana shops. You have seven... Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know what the population is in Manistee. Maybe it's 6,000, 7,000. County-wise, 27? I don't know.
Manistee.
You're talking about putting two shops possibly out of business or maybe one shop. I don't know. It's like robbing Peter to pay Paul. You're just going to open... If you need... If you guys need to make money, there's other ways... Or tax revenue, I should say. There's other ways about it. You know, Veterans Boulevard. You know, that's a terrible street, and that's Veterans Boulevard. You have a memorial there for the veterans. And I'm just... I'm flabbergasted. I mean, I don't see... What next? You guys want more tax revenue? Well, I suggest that, you know, the DDA and the, you know, the Mayor and everybody else, come up with a plan of infrastructure, of housing, retail, entertainment. Come up with a game plan, a long-term game plan. Stick to it and get it done. It's really... I hate to tell you guys, it's legwork and it's work, but it's not that difficult. I did it for almost 20 years of my life in Illinois, but that's neither here nor there. You're talking about opening up more pot shops. So what next? You know, excuse me, strip clubs, porno shops? Because that generates easy tax revenue? You have to get... I mean, look, I'll say this. You know, you have... You have three main arteries coming in through Manistee. 22, 31, 55. You have old gas stations. You have tons of trucks out there. You could, you know, hire an extra police officer. I'm sure there's a weight limit. Many of these trucks are over their weight limit that are tearing up your roads. You could ticket them. I mean, this is just one simple way. I can name six, five to six businesses that would love to be in this town. It's just calling up the companies, talking, the property there. I'm not going to tell you guys how to do your job, but, you know, we moved to this town specifically because when we were looking at homes in Traverse, Sagatow, Grayling, all over Michigan. We like Michigan. We wanted to be near water, on the river, on the lake. And we fell in love with this town, specifically the people. I mean, every home we went to, we went out and walked around the town, talked to the townspeople. This is a beautiful town. It's a gorgeous town. It should be thriving, and for the reasons it's not is baffling to me. And the fact that you guys just want to... Here, no offense to anybody here, but I'm going to state my piece, if you don't mind. Selling... You know, I get development, and I'm all for new development, but it has to be the right development. And just to sell yourselves short and say, well, somebody wants to come in and develop something, doesn't make it right. And, you know, you have prime property along the channel and along the river. I just don't feel it's being utilized properly. But that's... That's me. And look, I'm an outsider, and I get that. But, you know, like I said, I know at least five businesses that would pop up into this town if somebody would just call them. And it's not my job... And I'm sorry to say, it's not my... I have a job. It's not my job to call them. But it's very simple to do. You know, you get on the phone, you talk to their, you know, real estate attorney, and they're going to ask you two questions, most likely. What's your traffic count? What's your foot count? And you need a salesman in there to explain to them that it's... That's not how it works in this area. That's how it works in a metropolitan area, New York, Chicago, California. That's how it works there, in most cities. But here, you have people traveling from Onecoma, Bear Lake, Luddington, to go shopping. So you need to have somebody in that position who can sell it. It's not an easy thing to do, but it's not impossible.
Mayor, I believe we are at time.
Okay. Well, thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Telephone number 1619. I'm sorry, that was you. Telephone number 7502.
Yes, my name is Trevor Johnson. I'm at 7548 Coates Highway. Um, I more or less was trying to see, you know, like, what your guys' thought was on adding more licenses. Obviously, the process was pretty fast-paced, rigorous, that everyone had to go through in the first place. It was like a race to get this and then a race to get that, and everyone kind of jumped around and was racing, and fees were brought up. It looks like now, you know, there's two stores open in town, and it looks like two for sure, if not three of them, are being worked on right now. And originally, there was five licenses given out. You know, the population's small. I've grown up in Manistee, been around here my whole life. Obviously, you know, we can have a limited number of pizza places, and you can sell pizza to a whole family. You can't sell marijuana to everyone. It's for 21 and above. You know, where's... Where's the market going to come from? What's the long-term goal of letting in more licenses when you guys haven't even seen what can happen with the first five? And so, you know, from my point of view, I figured why not wait until April, like you guys have thought about or talked about before? See what's... You know, who's where at that point in time? Are these five stores open? Has everyone at least been approved or began their construction? And then kind of venture out from there if it's worth more opening. You know, at the end all the... Like, retail isn't even the most profitable portion of the marijuana industry. So if it's about, you know, getting sustainable business, maybe opening up some more spots for grows or processing or secure transports is a better way to look at it, than opening up so many retails that it just puts people out of business. I know that we just put a ton of money and time and effort into our facility to open up, and we did that, having accepted that it was going to be five. And I think we started at three, and it grew to five, and, you know, camping out overnight. What we had to go through to get there, and we accepted that we were going to have four competitors, and we're going to open. And now it's... All that's kind of, you know, thrown out the window, and it'll be a free-for-all. And after the money that we put in and the other people put in, you know, how does that make sense? Or how is that fair to us as business owners? You know, it'd be like opening five of anything in one strip mall isn't that easy. So, yeah, I guess that's about all I had to say was I think you guys should kind of think about what is the overall plan? How it impacts the people that are already involved? And how it's going to impact the long-term effect before, you know, before it's too late? So, thank you for your time.
Telephone number 7887. Telephone number ending in 7887, do you have a comment? Telephone number ending 1619, do you have a comment? Vicky, do you have a comment?
Not at this time, Heather. Thank you.
Thank you. Telephone number 5863, do you have a comment?
I do. Hello? Can you hear me?
Can hear you. Yes, please state your name and address.
Great. Will do. Couldn't tell. Hi, my name is Craig Ernoff. I'm an attorney at 1212 South Washington, Royal Oak, Michigan, and I represent a company that is on Arthur Street there in Manistee. I previously written the council about asking you to decline to accept the changes to your ordinance, making it unlimited. And I prefaced in my email earlier and would reiterate today that to do so right now, while the businesses that were previously granted the opportunity had already begun making investment, had already worked with investors, showing them the local ordinance and showing them the competitive landscape, and getting, you know, money is invested in backing them to do this with those, you know, parameters in mind, and now having the council unilaterally change it where that landscape would be substantially different, where there could be businesses on top of other businesses, side by side, with no limit to what that could do is not only going to starve your community of any investment from outsiders, it's going to allow those that are there to be, you know, shrunken down and limit what their investment back into the community will be. It's not just permitting fees. There's a lot of social equity involved with what these companies do to get themselves through the prequalification process and then through the licensure. And those five that waited in the rain and stood out there and did what you asked them to do should be given the opportunity to prove that they are the right market for your community before you go ahead and make changes to it and ultimately potentially dilute, you know, the quality of the services being provided. I represent clients and license fees literally from the Ohio and Indiana borders into the U.P. We're going to have some stores open along the Wisconsin border soon. We're going to have some stores open along the Wisconsin border soon and virtually everywhere in between. And it's rare that a, a community would just say, let's start with five and wait a year. And while they're doing it all, let's just change it. Because that, that doesn't give those that made the investment in you the opportunity to, to fulfill their promises to you either. Um, so we truly think that this would be bad for the marijuana community within Manistee. Having worked with and represented, you know, co-, you know, companies all throughout the state. Um, it, it just seems like this would, this would end up having the negative consequence of being low-hanging fruit type of operators that weren't really able to win competitive markets that, you know, would hold them to account differently rather than just be zoned correctly. You know, and just trying to get in the game that way and potentially, you know, doing things in non-compliant manners as opposed to those like, you know, heritage that's inauthentic that are there to, you know, thrive in compliance and, and show and be a beacon for people to come to your town, utilize their services and then to look for other services, have food, shop in your community, you know, and do things that are more local beyond just the store. And that's what other communities have done to really kind of prop up their marijuana businesses, not envelop them in other competition that drives them out. Thank you for your time and consideration. I really hope you'll reconsider going to unlimited, allowing the five that have been approved to finish their projects. And then maybe reevaluating is five the right number at that time? Because the five micro businesses that they got up and running as well, you're going to end up having roughly ten licensed tax bases and that's pretty solid for the size of your community. Thank you for your time.
Telephone number four-one-seven-five, do you have a comment?
Yes, Heather, thank you. This is Mark Miller, the Economic Development Director for the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce. The chamber's address is eleven Cypress Street in Manistee. Council members, good evening. Interested very much in, in hearing your, your thoughts and your feedback on a presentation tonight on a senior housing project that's being presented by Mr. Al Martin. The project would entail, uh, two properties that are on the redevelopment-ready communities priority list that Manistee has put forward several years ago. These are underutilized sites that, uh, that are primed for redevelopment with the help from M E D C. And, uh, we've been working with the developers to try to assist them. Uh, so we very much interested in hearing what you think of this project and, and how that might fit in with, with your vision for, uh, for housing development. These two sites just for your, uh, just for your point of interest are the Amor Sign Property on Water and the Jones or Dairy Property on River Street. So with that, very much looking forward to hearing your thoughts from the chamber and how you would like to proceed. So, uh, we're listening intently. Thank you and good night.
Sarah, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. Um, I just want everybody to know.
Please state your name and address, please.
Sarah Howard. Um, I work with the Manistee County Council on Aging, four-five-seven River Street. And, um, we've worked with this group before for the housing. And, um, as we all know, seniors need safe, affordable housing in Manistee County. Um, and, and we really support this project. Doesn't matter really where the housing is at this point, we just need good senior housing. And I've had quite a few seniors just try to figure out what are they going to do? So, just wanted to throw that in there, we're very interested in this project.
Thank you. Moving on to, um, I have Tom, I have several Toms, this just says Tom's Galaxy. Do you have a comment? Telephone number four-six-eight-nine, do you have a comment? Four-six-eight-nine, do you have a comment? Okay, telephone number two-three-seven-nine, do you have a comment? Telephone number ending in two-three-seven-nine, do you have a comment? Telephone number ending in zero-seven-four-eight, do you have a comment? Telephone number zero-seven-four-eight. Telephone number ending in one-nine-eight-one, do you have a comment? Telephone number ending in one-nine-eight-one, do you have a comment? Okay, moving on, telephone number seven, oh, go ahead, is this one-nine-eight-one?
Pass.
Pass, thank you. Telephone number ending in seven-three-zero-two, do you have a comment? Telephone number ending in seven-three-zero-two, do you have a comment? If I have missed anybody, if you would please unmute yourselves and let me know real quick. I'll try to get you into the comment here.
Four-six-eight-nine, William.
Four-six-eight-nine, thank you, and again, your name?
William McKenzie. Four-nine-eight-five Maple Road.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm one of the owners of Authentic Two-three-One there on Arthur Street. And I have some, you know, serious concerns about the fact that you guys are considering opening this up to unlimited licenses. Um, you know, from speaking with Mayor Zelinski and a number of members of the council, I, I understand that, um, the council is trying to, uh, bring some money into what they consider a blighted area down there. Um, and, and probably hoping that more people will come in, purchase or lease those properties and fix them up. Um, but I can tell you this, the only way that we're going to be able to do that is if, is if we are able to be successful in this community. Um, if there are fifteen marijuana stores right there all next to each other not making money, it's only going to be a matter of time before that whole stretch is blighted and vacant again. Um, if we are allowed to succeed, you know, we, we want to be part of this community. We want to reinvest in the community. Um, just my group alone has spent well over a million and a half dollars in Manistee County, in Manistee City, contractors, local stores. If you've driven by, you've seen that, uh, we are heavily participating in the county Christmas event. Um, you know, we're here to be a part of the community and we want the chance.
Are you still there? There's somebody, there's, I'll try and mute and see where we're getting that from. Go ahead.
I know. And also, you may want to, um, reiterate to people that they have to dial, um, star-six-three to speak because I wasn't able to take myself off mute for a significant period of time. Um, yeah. Um, I, the only way that this really works out well for Manistee is if they allow us to succeed, you know, allow us to create these jobs. Um, stores that can't be full of people can't hire people. Stores that can't fill their shelves, sell their wares and, and profit will not stay. They will go elsewhere, uh, or they'll go out of business. And that's just the fact of the matter. This store, this town cannot, um, provide for more than five stores, even five. So I really hope that you guys will reconsider, um, you know, going unlimited on these licenses. I think huge mistake. Thank you.
I've got some background noise, I'm not sure who is not muted, um, but I'm hearing something. Okay, have I missed anybody? Has everybody had a chance to talk?
Hi, hi, uh, I was called earlier, but as Willie just mentioned, I had a bit of trouble unmuting. Um, I'm phone number two-three-seven-nine and my name is Ian Smith, uh, at four-three-eight and a half Third Street. Um, am I okay to speak?
Yep, go ahead.
All right, uh, I'm with, uh, kind of everybody and wishing that there be some reconsideration. Uh, I am the Regulatory Compliance Officer for Authentic Two-three-One. And personally, firsthand, I've experienced the process and the extent that we have to go through to maintain compliance and make sure that these businesses are a positive and safe and compliant addition to the community. And my concerns are if we just open up the floodgates, at what point will the attention to detail and the compliance, uh, sorry, the compliance that we've all worked so hard to adhere to? At what point do we dilute the ability of the state to monitor that? I think that the five businesses that are working and the two that are open, uh, I know the work that we have to go through. And I know that there's just so much care that we've all put into these businesses. And it really worries me that we're opening the doors to people that really don't care about the community like we do. Uh, we really do work hard to spend money in the community, employ community members, be of positive impact and kind of fight the stigmatism that kind of has been coming along with these businesses. And I really would hate to see this unlimited amount of licenses undo all of the hard work that we've been doing to kind of bring a positive light to something that shouldn't be painted negatively anyways. Um, so I really do hope that we reconsider the unlimited licenses and allow those of us that care about the community and have done our part and worked hard and followed the compliance rules, give us a chance to show the community and you all like, we're worth it, we're here and we should be helped and not kind of impeded in the way that this would do to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? I guess if you, um, are having difficulties on muting, it's star-six-three. Try that to unmute and please state your name and address if there's anyone else. Uh, one more time, anybody else for public comment? Otherwise, I wouldn't going to hand it back over to Mayor Zelinski. Okay, Mayor, I'm not hearing anything.
Thank you, Heather. Discussion on development of property on Water Street and River Street. Mr. Al Martin?
Well, actually, Ms. Mayor Zelinski, my name is Kitty Tyner and I'm going to jump in for Al. Um, we're going to be tag teaming a little bit on our presentation and Al is going to pull up the PowerPoint. So I apologize to everybody on the phone, um, that you won't have the visual that the council members have.
It says the host has disabled screen sharing.
Let me get that for you. Showing that you can do it.
Try again. Host disabled participant screen sharing.
Got it?
There we go.
Okay.
All right. While Al is pulling up those screens, I will take a moment. Thank everybody for giving us an opportunity to share with you today about the senior housing development that we are proposing for, uh, Water Street and River Street, um, in downtown Manistee. Uh, my name is Kitty Tyner. I am the Executive Director of the Oceana County Housing Commission Nonprofit Corporation. Um, and I'm joined today by my development partners, um, Al Martin, who is manning the PowerPoint. He is our development consultant. He has been, um, providing development services for nonprofit organizations like ours for around thirty years. So he's a wealth of information and knowledge. Um, we're also joined by Kendra Thompson, who many of you know. Um, she is a Manistee native and she is our architect on our development team. And we have worked with Kendra, um, on three other projects, uh, that we have done development-wise that have been successfully funded through the Longcome Housing Tax Credit Process. Woodland Place Apartments in Hart, the cottages at Griswold, Senior Housing in Hart, as well as Shelby Trails, uh, which is currently underway in Shelby. So, um, we may seem a little familiar to many of you and that's because we came before the council about a year ago to talk about our Monroe cottages project that we were proposing, um, to develop for senior housing on the Saint Mary's Church site, just north of, north of downtown. And we, we did prepare that project and submitted it to Mishda for, um, the June first Longcome Housing Tax Credit Competition Round. And unfortunately, the project was not competitive. This last round was, was very, very competitive. And while we didn't get funded in that, in that go-around, we do have plans to, um, hopefully resurrect, uh, that proposal in the future. So, so we're coming to you again with, um, to discuss, uh, senior housing. Um, and, and the site that we want to talk about is, um, a river water development located at, uh, four-forty-three Water Street. So we actually have two different parcels in our one site. Um, we have the parcel at four-forty-three Water Street, which is Tom Amor's sign building. And we've been calling that the livery. And then, um, our buildings at four-fifty-one and four-fifty-seven River Street, uh, which is the Jones Building. Um, and we have been calling that the dairy. And the reason that we've been using those names is those are some of the historic uses of those properties from around the turn of the century. So. So we are going to touch briefly on, um, a couple of items related to this and, and we'll kind of tag team back and forth as, as we're doing our presentation. So bear with us if our technology, uh, gives us any trouble. Um, I don't think it's going to be much news to many of you that, um, we have some pretty significant housing needs for Manistee's senior population. The largest age cohort in the city, as well as the County of Manistee, are seniors, uh, age fifty and older. And this age cohort is the largest growing cohort in the county. Um, and so, so it's projected to continue to increase at a more rapid rate than the other age cohorts. And with that comes a different, um, need for housing. As we've been involved in working to, um, develop senior housing in Manistee County, we've talked with quite a few seniors, um, who've expressed their needs and their concerns. And a lot of them are looking for housing, um, that is affordable on fixed incomes, but also that is more maintainable. So we're talking to a lot of seniors that are wanting to downsize from homeownership and come back into the rental market, not maintain lawns, not have to worry about maintenance or shoveling snow. Uh, they don't need the size anymore. They want, they want the convenience, um, of renting rather than owning, but the options are very limited. We know overall that the housing market in Manistee is very tight. There's not a high rate vacancy rate, um, across all rentals, let alone those that are, um, more accessible and appropriate for seniors. So what that ends up doing is putting a little bit of a crunch, um, with this population where they're holding on to their homes longer than what they would, which means that they're not freeing. they're holding on to their homes longer than what they would, which means that they're not freeing them up for workforce, uh, and young families that are looking to purchase. Um, but it also means that, that, um, we are losing seniors, um, in some respects to different communities where housing is more available. While most of them want to remain within Manistee, this is where their natural supports are, where they're involved with church, uh, family members, uh, doctors, their social life, um, and most people want to stay rooted in their community. And so they're looking at what their options are, um, and not really finding many satisfying answers. Um, so we're here to help try to understand that need and meet that need. Um, and we're, we're excited that this opportunity, um, has come about to, um, develop these, these properties. So, um, we believe that, that this project, um, of developing senior housing in uh, Water Street and River Streets really aligns well with the City of Manistee's master plan. Um, specifically, it's notated in the master plan that you have a goal of consideration of senior housing within the city. Um, to maintain existing senior housing and support the expansion of assisted living through marketing potential sites, but also to specifically set aside senior housing space that is utilized solely by seniors as the needs of seniors differ from other age cohorts. Um, so this is a need that we're directly, um, working to address. By having, um, this mixture of housing with the downtown, um, commercial district is not, um, an untraditional use by any means. Um, the downtown district already has a wide variety of housing opportunities. Um, and in fact, we've seen an increase, not just in Man, in another downtowns, but in Manistee as well, of rehabilitation of the second and third story commercial spaces above the, sorry, second and third story spaces above the first story, commercial spaces, um, turning those into housing units. Uh, there's still unused spaces that have the potential of being developed into residential units. Um, and when you have that mixture of residential and commercial, um, in a downtown district, it really, um, helps to build that vibrancy of the downtown district because people are, who reside in or near the downtown are more likely to spend more of their income supporting those local businesses, which and then those local businesses support other local businesses. And so we get that local multiplier effect, um, for those dollars. So we kind of touched a little bit on that with the slide as well. Um, in that, that really to have that vibrant community, you want that, that good mixture. So as Mark Miller from the Chamber of Commerce mentioned, um, in his public comment, um, the sites that we have selected are part of, um, four total sites that have been determined as a redevelopment ready site. So there are three additional redevelopment ready sites located within a mile of the location that we're talking about. Um, and the specific location that we're talking about has already been certified as a redevelopment ready site, um, by M E D C. So by having development happen on that site and specifically development, um, providing senior housing will, will improve the marketability of those other sites. And it will show, um, that the City of Manistee is, is invested in promoting, um, quality development, um, which will encourage more investors to come to the community. So as I touched on, I already introduced a couple of members of our development team, but it takes a big team to pull off a project like this. Um, the, the, uh, river water development will ultimately end up being owned by the O C H C Manistee Limited Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnership, um, which, um, my organization, the Oceana County Housing Commission Nonprofit Corporation, um, is a primary general partner of. So, um, it will be essentially, this project will be owned locally. So we are not an out of town developer, um, coming, looking to throw up some housing and leave. We have a local presence here. Um, our organization has provided services in Manistee County, um, over the years past, um, and we have a lot of local partnerships and collaborations that have happened um, to, to ensure that, that this project can be successful. So, um, I introduced Kendra Thompson as our architect. Um, the contractor would be West Construction. Um, and then, uh, we also have, um, partnerships with the Manistee County Council on Aging and the Little River Band of Ottawa Indians, um, for this development. So.
I will jump in here. Uh, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good, I'm unmuted. Um, so thank you for letting us, um, discuss this property with you and this project. Um, as Kitty indicated, we're referring to the development project as the river water development. Um, and then referring to the Amor sign property as the livery and the Jones, uh, River Street property as the dairy. Those are historic uses of the property. Uh, neither of the sites have any notable historic name to them other than the use of, of the buildings or the use of the sites and hence the livery and the dairy building. So, uh, so the proposal that the development that we're looking at this evening is a forty-nine unit senior housing development project, apartment style. And the livery property, which is the Amor property, would be a new, um, forty-six unit apartment complex, four-story, um, facility. And the dairy property, um, the Jones property on River Street would be, uh, three housing units and then have the support, um, community room, meeting rooms, office space. Uh, on the main floor. So, uh, the side that you see in front of you is the conceptual outline perimeter of the Amor sign property, uh, with the north boundary, the top boundary being Water Street. First street to the south and then bound between Oak and Pine Street on the east to the west. Uh, so good fortune on this parcel is, um, that it does have access to, uh, to two streets. So we're able to, to garner some, um, flow of traffic through the space. So. Um, yeah, go ahead and flip it to the next. There we go. So this is the existing property, the Amor sign property. It's, um, a little less than an acre and a half, I think one point three, one point four acres. Uh, it's, you know, historically been used as what I'll say a backlot type of parcel um, to the downtown, the main throker of River Street downtown. Um, and, you know, most notably been used as more of an industrial manufacturing type of facility with Amor signs being there for, for a very long time. But prior to that, it was actually this whole block area, uh, was where the horse stables and the liveries were. So, uh, um, so hence I keep referring to it as those backlot type of property. And then the, the property at four fifty-one, four fifty-seven River Street, um, is actually two part, two buildings. And you can most noticeably, no, most notably see it on the River Street view. Um, the four fifty-one, uh, building, which is the building on the left, is Manistee's oldest, uh, wood framed structure, uh, the only remaining wood structure. It survived the great fire. So it, uh, definitely is a historical and significant contributing building to our downtown National Historic District. And then the building at four fifty-seven, um, is a later building, masonry building, but it's over time, some facade improvements that we would like to amend. So, conceptually in front of you right now is, uh, an overall site plan. Again, this is a conceptual site plan. We are in the process of working on, uh, a full site plan approval uh, package to submit to Planning Commission, uh, for their review on it. Um, at the livery property, uh, which is the Amor sign property, uh, we have, you can see the shaded area depicts the footprint of the building. It's a four-story building, uh, with, um, the parking area on the west. And we're able, like, as I mentioned before, we're fortunate in that, that Amor property does, uh, uh, have access off of Water Street as well as Pine Street. Um, it does have access to Oak Street, but, um, that portion of Oak Street is a pretty sloping hill. So, um, uh, what we're proposing is a, a loop, um, with an entry coming and going from Pine Street as well as Water Street parking. We have the main entry at the upper left corner of the, the footprint of the building. Um, the, so the northwest corner and then at the southwest corner is a secondary entry. As well as stairwell at each, each end. Across the street at the dairy property, you can see the footprint of the, the two, um, two-story buildings. Uh, those buildings actually have, um, a single-story garage off of the back, uh, toward the Water Street side. And, and we are proposing that we would remove those. Uh, and then we would construct a, um, entry point, uh, off of that Water Street side. Um, the grading, uh, between our, our grade and finished floor level of the building itself is up a little bit. So we're going to have a few steps and we're going to have a, uh, very free ramp. So we're creating a covered terrace area. I can even envision, um, possibly, you know, put a few rocking chairs out there on the terrace. Uh, we also have a, uh, separate entrance for the, that would serve the upstairs units on that. Additionally, you can see, and I think Al has the cursor going, that the, the alleyway, um, the undeveloped space between, uh, the four fifty-one, uh, River Street property and the United Way building is part of this parcel. And we, we would be looking at developing a pocket park there. So it gives us that connectivity from River Street, um, to, uh, to, uh, the livery building, um, across the street at the Amor property, as well as our access to our entryway, um, off of Water Street to the, the dairy building. So the creation of that pocket park, I think could be a pretty, pretty neat feature. Um, and then also it would, uh, and provide some enhancement, uh, to the United Way folks to, uh, for entering their building in their, their back door that staff uses. So. Uh, if you want to, yeah, flip it to the next slide. There you go. So this is just a, an initial conceptual, uh, design for the, this is the livery. Um, so at the Amor property, uh, four-story apartment complex. Uh, we're trying to pick up the flavor, the character of, um, Manistee's historic, uh, River Street. This particular property is not actually within the historic district. Uh, but obviously, um, it is in close proximity and we want to be cohesive and compatible with that area. Uh, so the, the main floor line, uh, ceilings may be a little higher. So we get the proportions of that, you know, uh, lower level versus upper level. Uh, that's typical of, of, you know, many of our downtown buildings. Um, a change of materials between, you know, a rusticated stone and a couple of different brick colors. Um, I, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to utilize a brick, um, system similar to what we're doing at the college project, the old Millikens Glicks building. Uh, so it's a brick veneer, um, that, that, uh, we can utilize in a more cost-effective fashion. Uh, and then just some simple detailing it up toward the top to, to again, just to note some of that historic characteristics that, that we have in our buildings. Um, there's no intention for these building, for these units to have balconies. Uh, but what you're seeing on this rendering is reflecting, I'll call it a Juliet balcony. Um, it's just a wrought iron, um, unit that, you know, projects out from the, the window wall about twelve, sixteen inches. Uh, you have a couple of examples of that over at the brewery, uh, in the upper apartments. Um, they have a few of those, those types of balconies. And I shouldn't use that word balcony, really. Um, and then you can see just at the, at the bottom right side, uh, just a glimpse of, we would like to create the entries into the parking lot to carry on the city's streetscape with the, the, um, stone walls, sill walls and the wrought iron fencing and diminable, um, historic lighting fixtures. So we'd anticipate doing that off of Water Street as well as off of Pine Street. Uh, just to keep that cohesiveness and, and help this, this project contribute to the development of, of the historic area. Next slide, next page. There you go. Again, this is a, a crude, uh, rendering of the back of the Jones building. So the back of the dairy and, uh, the building on the right again is the wood frame structure. So that would be treated in a different fashion than, than the, uh, the west building. Um, so I would imagine that we would do some wood lap siding off the back. Right now it's all covered with, um, some old barn metal siding. That area, we'll be happy to get rid of that. There you go. That's perfect. Um, you can, you can see the significant difference in the opportunities that we have to, to make the back of these buildings, which really in this case is going to be, uh, equal to the front. Um, and then on the, the west, the west building, um, we would continue some of the brick treatment and then, uh, provide a terrace, um, you know, with our stairs and barrier free ramp. So we have a covered entry area to this. So, pretty significant in, in getting the back of what, what really has been an eyesore. Um, since I've been, since I was a kid, it's always been like, like you see it in the picture now. Uh, next slide, Al. Thanks. So here's just, um, a plan for, of the, uh, livery, uh, project. Main floor, uh, upper left-hand corner is our main entrance lobby area. Uh, and the lower left corner is a secondary entrance coming in off the parking lot, uh, with, um, elevator, stairwell at each end. Um, you know, mail pickup boxes, uh, maintenance and so forth. And we have apartment units, one and two unit apartments. This entire development is one and two bedroom units. Um, the one-bedroom units, uh, very little bit, but are roughly seven hundred and fifty square foot, uh, size, two bedrooms, very, um, around that one thousand square foot. The ones over at the dairy are larger in size, uh, because we have, you know, existing conditions there that we're dealing with. Uh, so those get up to that almost eleven hundred square foot or two bedrooms over there. So, uh, and then as you go upstairs to the second, third and fourth floor, uh, there are a combination of, of, um, each floor is a combination of eight one-bedroom units and four two-bedroom units. So that's true for the second, third and fourth floor. Next view. It's, uh, let's take a look at the dairy. Uh, this is the upper floor of the dairy. So we would be looking to rehab this building similar to what, you know, has been occurring and, and other downtown River Street properties where the upper levels, um, uh, are, you know, renovated to, to, um, some nice apartments. In this case, we have three two-bedroom apartment units and a simple stairwell. Um, both of these buildings obviously will be fully fire suppressed. Um, all of these units, both at the livery and the dairy will have, you know, modern kitchens, energy efficient, um, fixtures, uh, and heating system. Uh, these will be air-conditioned. Um, full appliance package with dishwasher, garbage disposals, washer and dryers in each of the units. So. Um, then the lower level, I say lower level, the main level, the street level, um, of the Jones building of the dairy. Um, again, coming off of Water Street is where we would have this, um, remove the existing garages, single-story garages and develop a, um, terrace area, uh, entry deck area, uh, coming into lobby, office space, support space of meeting rooms, community rooms, community functions. Um, being able to happen there. community rooms, community functions, and being able to happen there. And then also have a secured secondary entrance for the tenants themselves. Next slide. So and I, you know, I hit on some of these that we will be designing these, utilizing Enterprise Green Energy Efficiency Design Standards. Sometimes we've done projects that are LEED certified. We found that the Enterprise Green tends to be a little easier to jump through the hoops as far as the paperwork. So, you know, fully modern, complete, air-conditioned washers, dryers and so forth. So. So, uh, you know, and just kind of wrapping this up in terms of what what the project itself consists of. I look at the copy on Water Street, the Aymore property, as being, you know, historically more of an industrial outlet type of 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 property. And to be able to address the needs of housing and put housing right in our downtown and provide seniors that access and privacy to to the amenities of downtown, I think, is just the right solution for that property. And then obviously the ability to rehab the the Jones property on River Street and bring it back to its historic glory while providing additional housing on those upper levels is definitely in keeping what we've been doing in in other properties on the downtown district. So at this time, I am going to turn it over to Al, who's going to give you a little more insight on the development.
Okay, we we just wanted to talk, one of the items that we need to talk about is the pilot. And I know in your packet there was a handout talking about the pilot versus property taxes. But just from our perspective, that we're looking for singles and couples. The rents for the one-bedrooms, 360 to 850, and for two-bedrooms, 430 to a little over 1,000 probably. All these numbers are still in the preliminary stages, so. But it gives us, the income range are are singles will be between 13,000 and 36,000, just about. And couples that have incomes of 15,000 and 41,000. And what we do is we set up different levels of income requirements for a certain number of units. And depending on what level you're at is what your rent that you pay. The the pilot is an important piece of this project from our perspective, not just for the savings on taxes versus pilot payments, but also for the points for the competition. As you know, it's a very competitive game with our friends at MISTAA and the pilot is a crucial piece of that. But I did want to point out that currently the taxes for all six of the parcels that we're talking about, Mr. Aymore's property is actually five different parcels that were bundling together into one sale. And then with the Jones property across the street are about $9,500 a year. And Manistee's portion is about 3,063. The first-year pilot payment will be about $12,700. When you add in the $9,800 MSA, this is an increase of over $10,800 just to the city in the first year. Because our, your portion would be about 13,888. You put that increase in 20 years, it's about 228,000 over those 20 years. So we think it's a significant impact for the city's finances. And hopefully, at the end of our discussion today, you all can recommend that we start the pilot conversation. The, this is our contact information. If anybody has any questions after, you want to email us or give us a call. But we'd be glad to answer any questions or hear any comments and thoughts you may have on the on the proposal.
Thank you, council members. Do you have any questions or concerns? What do you feel about the pilot?
This is Nick Shemaski. I've got a couple of questions. When we're talking about seniors, are we talking about seniors 55 and older?
Yes, no, they will be age 55 and older.
Okay. Are these apartments similar to the cottages? Are going, are they going to be handicap accessible?
Yes, so all of these units will be handicap accessible to the entry area. So they're walkable and ADA accessible. And then we have a certain number of units that are completely ADA accessible and others that are ADA adaptable. And all of the community, community spaces are fully ADA accessible.
And then the last thing is, has anybody talked to you about the possibility of adding a pharmacy annex to this property development? Because I know that's one of the things that would help us with our scores. And it would be something if you're going to have senior housing, to have a small pharmacy annex. And now that the laws have changed, it makes it a lot more available because you don't have to have an on-premise pharmacist. Just a thought.
Go ahead, Al, I'll let you.
I just, that's a great idea. I'm putting that on my list of things to investigate for sure.
Yeah, I I think, Mick, I think you're onto an idea that that we kicked around. And and that at this point had not included tenant space, what I'll call tenant, you know, available space. But it's certainly an idea that was on our radar and would be worth taking a closer look at.
So, you know, overall for me, I I think it's it's a great idea. I I think it's a great use of property. It's not like residential has not been developed in that area because you're, the next block over, you have the cottages on Water Street, which is a new development as well. So that may actually even spur some development there for for other seniors that want maybe a little bit more than just an apartment. So it it could have some benefits to that whole area. So and I I'm just be thrilled just to see that that part of Manistee developed.
I I would like to make a comment. This is all rather new to me. I thought this was going to be workforce housing. Somehow I got, we didn't get a whole lot of information beforehand. I will say that anything that Kendra does is always beautiful. I always like all of her. So, but my concern is this. It seems to be in our rush to develop property, and I realize this is a private sale of the Amors, and honestly, I have a lot of respect for them as well. It is not a good fit in my mind. I still think we need to put for the housing where the new senior community center is going to be. This is not a good fit. I saw this in my mind as workforce housing for young professionals, kids going to college at West Shore, kids working downtown, working in the new development that's going to be the gateway project, working possibly at the other end of the street. I saw young professionals really utilizing that space a lot better. This had never occurred to me that this would be for senior housing. So I'm really kind of overwhelmed right now. And I don't have a comment as far as whether I was supported or not. Because I, as I've said, my initial reaction is, doesn't feel like a good fit at this point. That's it.
Anybody else have any comments?
Mayor, I have a comment, Dave Bachmann.
Sure.
I like what I see. I like the development. I like the idea. I like the energy and I can see no reason why I wouldn't be able to support this from what I've seen so far.
Anybody else?
Yes, this is Scott Phillips. I have a comment, if I may.
Not at this point.
Okay.
I have a comment. I kind of agree with Linda. I was confused because the part of the agenda, the packet said 49 workforce housing apartments. So when it was senior apartments, I was kind of taken back as well. So I was expecting more of the younger generation apartments. So I'm kind of like in the same boat as kind of having to digest it a little bit as well.
Anybody else? Any council members? Well, personally, I'm behind the project. I can support it. I think it's a good project. Naturally, I need more information and I think we all do. I'm not concerned about a pilot. We need to move forward with it. I don't know what step would be, Mr. Taylor, can you help us with that?
Well, if they want to move the project forward, it'd certainly have to go through the planning commission. That would be one step. And then, you know, then secondarily, they would have to start discussions with the city about the pilot and talk about that. And the other thing, given the location, I think it's a right move to bring it before the DDA just so they can weigh in on it. Because they will lose some money there. $3,500 is what we estimate annually. So, you know, there's a, there's a path forward. I think they put together a site plan that will be acceptable to the planning commission. They discuss, start discussions with my office about the pilot and then we can get them on the DDA agenda.
Okay, anybody else have any concerns, comments? Did we answer your questions?
If I could just interject there. So I have been working with the planning, planning department. And we are feverishly working on a site plan review package. We're anticipating going to the planning commission on an informal information-only discussion for, at their December meeting and then following that up with the actual special use review and site plan review at their January meeting.
When do you think, Kendra, more information will be coming our way as far as? You talked about everything seemed to be tentative and the drawings weren't really final. When, when do you think we might get more information?
So I I am anticipating going to the planning commission's meeting, their December meeting, probably with similar drawings, design drawings that we currently have. And then the January planning commission meeting will have the full site development package. That'll need to be submitted to the planning department at least 30 days prior to their January meeting. So that'll become public record the approximately December 10th, I think, is our our due date for that supplemental.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Allen, do you have enough information? Mr. Martin, I mean?
I'm good.
Okay.
We'll get a hold of, we'll get a hold of Mr. Taylor and get it, get the DDA agenda figured out and get the pilot started. And Kendra's working on the third piece of the puzzle. So, yep, we'll have it all together for you in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next item. Discussion on refuse.
Yes, yes, yes. May I say something?
No, just Scott Phillips.
Who, who, who is it?
Not at this time. It's not time for public comment. That was at the beginning of the meeting.
I didn't get an opportunity, I didn't get an opportunity at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes, you did. Is this Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
You were the first person to speak.
No, that was regarding the marijuana. This, this is in regards to the the housing.
The entire meeting, I understand that, but your time to talk on that was at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
We'll move on to the next discussion of refuse building in the DDA district. Mr. Bradford, Finance Director.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so council, as you know, the ADHAC Blight Committee made a number of suggestions to 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 take a look at refuse and in different areas. And one of the things that came out of this was that they wanted to remove refuse pickup from River Street. So we've been working very hard with Republic Services and the Utility Billing Department and Department of Public Works to kind of come up with the mechanism to implement that. And the first step on that was to approval to get the the dumpster corrals built in the DDA. Those have been constructed. There's two of them. And then the next step would be to actually get this implemented. And there's a couple of things that we have to do in order to make that work. The first thing is there's an ordinance that governs refuse collection in the city. We've amended it recently, but we needed to have a few more sections amended in order to implement the DDA dumpster corral. And there was a copy of that ordinance or draft proposed ordinance in the in the packet. It basically defines the district in the downtown area where people cannot put out refuse and have to use the dumpster corral or contract for a private dumpster if they have room for that. And then it also cleans up some some older language. And the third thing is does that it aligns some of the the refuse collection charges with how we actually do things with the water billing. So it's fairly straightforward. So that's one thing that will be coming in front of council next week is to put into the works to get that ordinance adopted and and change. And as you know, it takes two readings. The second thing we wanted to talk about was the fees in the downtown. And that we had to spend quite a bit of time on because there's not a lot of good data in the downtown about what all the different uses are in each of the buildings. It had to be compiled from several different sources. So we, we pulled in all available resources that we could and we actually canvassed the downtown. And then we did an analysis, looked at all the different properties, the different types of uses, whether it's residential apartments or retail or food service and what have you. We also spoke with Republic Services quite a bit to kind of work through a system. They have this type of dumpster district in the downtown and some other communities. So they were very helpful with that. And Matt Byletti is here as well from Republic Services if, you know, if he has some input or if there's questions later on. But I also spoke with the city of Grand Haven that's had this program for about 10 years and got some input from them on how they do it. So in the memo that I sent with the packet, what we came up with was basically four different types of classifications of of uses in the in the downtown district and what they would pay each month. So the first would be a residential type apartment, which would have a one-tote equivalent. And that would be the same as ours as a residential tote in the rest of the city. And then we had a small commercial or commercial classification, which would be, you know, small offices, small retail or maybe a service business, which is the equivalent of a residential tote, one tote per week. And then we had a second level of commercial, which would be for larger retail stores that generate more trash or maybe a small cafe or services that are very garbage intensive. And that would be the equivalent of three totes. And then finally, we have restaurant food service classification, which is the equivalent of 12 totes. And that would be for restaurants and bars or businesses with significant trash, such as the Vogue Theater. In Grand Haven, they only have three classifications. And they have a very complex surcharge on restaurants, which we didn't really want to go down that path. So we think we've come up with a system here that's workable for the downtown. And just wanted to get some input from council on that. The next steps really are, we have to adopt the ordinance amendment and then we have to communicate with the people in the district in the downtown about what's happening. And then, you know, put that in motion probably in January if things go according to plan. So I don't know if there's any questions about any of this. I've got, as I said, Matt Byletti from Republic Services and also Jeff McCula is here and was part of that process as well.
Any questions from council?
Are you proposing that we go back to putting dumpsters or totes back on River Street?
No, Councilmember Grabowski. What we're saying is the the residents in that district or the businesses in that district would be charged that amount, but they would have to use the totes. But I just tried, we tried to put it in the equivalency of of a tote. But I just tried, we tried to put it in the equivalency of, of a tote. So the people could kind of get an idea of what that meant in terms of volume. So absolutely not, they're not going to be putting tote out or any garbage out on River Street. If I had an apartment, I would be paying fifteen seventy-five a month and I'd have to take my garbage to a, one of the dumpster corrals.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mick.
I, I've got a couple of questions. One of them is, you know, some of the fees, especially for the restaurant seems high, but I don't know what they've currently been paying. Can you give an idea of what, what, uh, the Bluefish Grill, uh, paid prior? And now what we're going to charge them? So I have something to, to kind of weigh this.
Sure, and I'll let Matt weigh in here, but the Bluefish actually contracts for their own dumpster. But Matt can give you an idea of what that costs.
And Mick, so the, the blue fishing in restaurants like this, the equivalent there would be the same as what they would pry, if they were privately contracting for that service, is what that rate structure was based around. So a traditional restaurant is going to be between four and eight yards of service, depending on their square footage and their number of seating. And so that's where that fee was really derived from, is if it was a standalone restaurant outside of the district, what would they be paying for refuse and, and how much usage would they have of that corral?
So the Bluefish is paying around a hundred and eighty-five dollars a month currently?
Correct. Correct.
Um, but the second, second thing is, um, it, it looks like we're eliminating the possibility for, uh, recycling of cardboard. Uh, and is there any way for us to come up with some way of being able to continue the recycling program for downtown? I, I think that would be a disservice, not only to, to the community, but also to, uh, you know, just recycling in general.
Correct. So there's conversations going on with the, the contractor that picks that material now and how for them to do that without that material being on River Street. Do, do we have the actual solution to that yet? No. Um, but it's something that's in our mind sight. The ultimate goal of the DDA was to, and the subcommittee was to make it so when residents and, and, uh, visitors were walking that downtown district, that they weren't walking amongst those piles of discards on the weekends.
And Councilmember Schamansky, I mean, there's nothing preventing people from hauling their cardboard to the PCA trailer. It's just not as convenient as putting it out on the street. But, but I think the number one goal was to, as Matt mentioned, was to keep that off of River Street.
Well, you know, my, my concern is if we make it too hard to recycle, guess what? They don't. So I, I'm, I have a concern that, that we've made it basically impossible for anyone. And you're talking about lots of cardboard when you're talking about the downtown area. So I, 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 I really think that we need to put some thought into having at least some kind of alternative for recycling of paper products.
In that conversation with the, the cardboard, one of the alternatives that we're working with that contractor to see if, you know, if that they can go to the door and remove that material versus it being set on the street. So it, it just changes the way that that transaction occurs. Um, we don't have the definite answer on that yet, though.
All right, thanks.
And if I could, Dave Bachmann here, what's the mechanism when someone doesn't comply? I mean, certainly there's going to be someone who still puts it out there.
Well, I think at that point, it becomes an enforcement mechanism, um, on a complaint basis with the police department. And, and the ordinance, um, has, you know, teeth in it that I think they can probably fine him for repeated violations.
It's always going to be repeated before they get, I mean, five violations, what, what's the thought process?
Yeah, you know, I, I, I would defer to, to Chief Glass on that. I mean, it's not, that's not quantified in the ordinance. Um, and I, and I think, you know, I think there's going to be a transition period here where people are going to have to get used to hauling it up to the dumpster. I'm sure it's not going to be, you know, a hundred percent compliance from day one, but the, the goal is certainly to get there.
Okay, well, wait and see.
It, and just one other question, uh, you mentioned the Vogue. Uh, what was the Vogue being charged for refuse, uh, prior to this new fee?
Well, Councilmember Schamansky, um, I'm a little embarrassed to say that the Vogue wasn't being charged anything. Uh, and that, that was discovered in one of our audits that we did. So it's going to be a significant jump for them, but they're probably one of the biggest producers of refuse on River Street.
Is there anybody else with any questions or concerns? Mr. Taylor, do you have, uh, do you have enough information?
It'll be on an upcoming agenda for council's consideration.
Uh, I, just one more thing since that, since you brought that up. Is there any way for a, um, a, a business to be able to come back to the city and say, you know, hey, I'm not using twelve totes. Uh, I, I've come up with ways of reducing my, my, my usage and be able to get a lower rate.
So I, I think we don't have, you know, a, a super granular system here because that, that becomes a, a system that's impossible to administer. But certainly if there's a mistake, uh, in the number of apartments that we think are in a building or if somebody has a compelling case that they want to go from, uh, you know, a large commercial to a small commercial, um, and they can demonstrate that, you know, conclusively, then I think we would certainly, you know, consider that.
Should we accept or expect some resolution to the cardboard issue before we pass an ordinance? It doesn't have that in it, or is it kind of like cart before the horse?
Mr. Taylor?
Well, it sounds like there's some discussions on how they're going to, um, solve the problem. So I would say we adopt the ordinance and then continue working forward with, with the, whatever new mechanism we have for collecting cardboard.
Uh, I would just at least have some kind of, uh, note in the, in the ordinance, uh, allowing for recycle, uh, for some kind of mechanism for reasonable recycling.
Well, the, the one thing that we have to keep in mind is the, the intent is to have no trash, anything on, on River Street. And I think if we start making exceptions for cardboard, it's, uh, we're defeating the purpose. That's why I, personally, I would prefer that they continue the discussions, um, with the person that's going to pick up the cardboard to see if we can't get this, uh, in line by the first of the year. Because if we need two readings on it, it's not going to be in effect until after January first. So that gives us, you know, more than a month to resolve the problem. And that's why I would suggest we move forward with the ordinance and, you know, come up with this resolution concurrently.
Your Honor, if I can step in, this is Jeff McCula. The, um, the way that this entire process started was merchants downtown were concerned about the unsightly-ness of the refuse out on the curbs, uh, during the week. And they approached the DDA, who in turn approached city council, uh, looking for some assistance and coming up with a resolution. City council then created an ad hoc committee that consisted of, uh, merchants from downtown, Republic Services, myself, uh, council members. And these were, these items were discussed at length for quite a, quite a long time. And so all of these programs that resulted from it, um, had the ultimate goal of, of not putting out refuse on River Street. The way that the current program works is, um, businesses that choose to recycle their cardboard, um, there's volunteers from Massey Catholic Central that actually come and pick those up and then take them to the trailer at MCC. And so when Matt Byaletti was talking about those conversations, it's not a discontinuation of that recycling program. It's just how do, how could they pick up those materials without the step in where they put it out on the street? And so I think that, um, you know, those options and that pathway are still there. It's just going to take a little bit of adjustment in order to, uh, meet the intent of all those concerns.
Anybody else? Last call, anybody else? There are none, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Discussion on marijuana licensing, Mayor Pro Tem, Gavot, Schamansky.
Yes, uh, yeah, again, I, I, I agree with, uh, the people who, uh, talked on this issue. I, I think that it is probably, uh, premature for us to make any kind of decis- uh, decisions or even discuss, uh, additional licenses at this time until we have, uh, a full understanding of what we've already done. Uh, so my suggestion is that we would wait until after April, uh, when, uh, the licenses, uh, that we extended, uh, that license extension expires. And we'll actually know exactly what we have and how they're operating in a, a much better feel before we decide to make any changes to our existing, uh, ordinance. That would just be my suggestion.
I believe we have, uh, three applications waiting for state approval and they have until April first. So I'm in agreement with that. I think that we just need to be status quo until April first and then take another look and see what's going on and maybe reevaluate, make changes and maybe not. Anybody else?
Yes. Um, I just want to add on to the April first thing. I think the city staff, if they don't, we always ask them to do so much, um, could develop some sort of a, um, a step as to how this would happen. Let's just say a couple of those applicants don't make their April first deadline. I think, honestly, I personally am not in favor of getting, giving anybody any more extensions on this. Um, I would pers- I would prefer that they, if they have three people in line, like the mayor has suggested, they number them and they have a pro- they have a process developed as to how they will move forward as to how to award those to the next people in line. I don't want any more than five. I think five's going to be more than enough, but, um, I'm, I'm not in favor of making unlimited recreational licenses in that area.
I would have to agree. Um, I think we need to wait and see how it goes, um, and come back to it in April.
Anybody else?
Mayor, I feel the same way. I thought the people that spoke made good sense, made good arguments. And I can't see putting their businesses at risk just to add additional licenses that we, in reality, probably don't need.
Anybody else?
Yes, Mayor, as I've always been against licenses. Uh, I'm totally against giving any more license out. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Taylor, do you have enough?
Yes, I think I do.
Okay. Is there anything else? Um, Heather, could you please call on council members to see if they have anything else you'd like to talk about?
Yes, I will. Councilmember Bachman?
No, ma'am, I'm all set, thank you.
Councilmember Beaton?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Sipsec?
Um, yes, I actually, I have a, um, couple of questions for, uh, Chief Glass regarding the, uh, the blight. I don't know if you guys can hear me. Am I muted still?
Oh, you're good.
So I'm just wondering like what the per- if you can like walk me through real quick, like what the procedure is.
So for enforcement, specifically the procedure?
Yes, like, are you, so I have this blight report in front of me for October. And is that just for people that have called in and, and filed a blight complaint?
No, that's, that's a proactive, that, that's everything for the month. That includes calls and complaints and proactive, uh, activity by our officers.
Okay, so what's the procedure, like, once you have a blight complaint? Like, what's the procedure in the timeframe? Because I think I'm confused on the process here.
The first thing we do is we go make contact. We try to educate the public. Education's always first. And we give them an opportunity to remedy the issue. Um, depending on the issue, if it's, if it's something small like garbage in the yard, it can be remedied. We, we usually typically give them a week or so. If it's a, a larger problem that requires construction, we like them to provide us with a timeline. So that we can show that they're moving forward on, on, uh, remedying the issue. Um, if they don't comply, after we educate, we contact the city attorney to get a court date, uh, issue a citation. Again, once the citation's issued, we have to go back to the property, um, to make sure that the blight hasn't already been cleaned up. If it hasn't, we go back to the city attorney and we begin the court process.
Okay, okay. So here's my issue. I, I got this, this paperwork for October and I went by like the majority of these complaints. And it's almost December and they still have the same issues. So I, I feel like, and then I, I want to bring up nine hundred Davis Street too, because that was on the blight complaint twice in two thousand eighteen for the same thing. And I just drove by there yesterday and it looks exactly the same as it did in two thousand eighteen. So I'm just, I guess my frustration is, is if it's not on Maple Street, we're not paying attention to it. Like, if it's not where people are traveling all the time, where it's right out in front, it's not in Maxwell Town, it's not on some side street on the north side, it's getting pushed aside. So I guess my question to you is what do you need from us to get this like cleaned up and start, you know, actually cleaning this up? Because frankly, it's pissing me off that it keeps getting brushed aside until somebody brings it up. Like, you have nine fourteen Vine Street on here is, uh, they got a compost pile, but behind it, there's, right across the street is four blighted houses that, you know, in my opinion, two of them should be condemned. So I just, I, I need to know what you need from us to, to get this rolling. Like, not another committee, but something, what do you need help with?
Well, I appreciate you bringing that to my attention. Um, so the, the issue is, is that we get to a certain point with some of the blight and it becomes an issue of we can either give them a citation and take them to court. The issue they've had is they can't find contractors and building materials three times as, as much. So we've, we've kind of been stillmated there. We have had more blight enforcement in, in this past four months we've had in years. So we have made strides forward. The specific issues you bring, I, I can't, I have to see them to, to, to find out what the situation is. I can check into them and see what our enforcement efforts are specifically in that area. But again, um, you know, we can.
Well, I think, I think part of the problem is, is, and I don't know for certain, but I feel like it's not, i- if somebody's not calling and complaining about it, that the o- officers aren't taking it upon themselves to just blight these properties as they see them. Like, I think people got discouraged because they kept calling and calling over the past years and it's, you know, just gone by the wayside. So, and I think that the blight has gotten so out of control that now we don't have a handle on it and we don't know where to start. I mean, you don't need to be, you don't need a contractor to pick up your yard. I mean, it's, and you don't need a contractor to move fifteen cars off the street in, you know, out of driveways. So I, I don't know where to begin on this, but I think that we really need to stop pushing it aside.
Why, I don't disagree. I can just speak to the last four months. I can't speak to previous years. Majority of calls that come in for blight or investigations are proactive work by our officers, not called in. That doesn't mean that people don't call, but, but the majority of complaints we investigate are proactive work by the officers. And we'll continue to try to enforce blight and, and be out there as much as we can. Um, I can say that, like I said, in the last four months, we've had more resolutions and had more impact on blight with less officer working, less hours than we have in, in, since I've been a police officer here. So we will continue to, to self-evaluate and see how we can improve our services. I can, uh, draw my attention specifically to the issues you brought up and look to see if we need to pay more attention to those areas.
Okay.
Chief Glass, um, would changing our ordinance help you any in your enforcement? Would working on our ordinance maybe make it better?
Part of the, part of the, the issue that we have, and I'd like to, to work out in this winter is, is the due process part of it. Can we make it simpler as far as getting it in the court and enforcement? And, and I've drawn upon other communities. You know, some communities, if you have blight, you educate them first and you write them a ticket and they're in court. We're here, we have to write a ticket, we, so I'm looking to see if we can streamline that. We're here, we have to write a ticket. We, so I'm looking to see if we can streamline that process and make it less labor intensive so we can have a larger impact quicker, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
We don't have to certify, mail a ticket, and then one goes to the owner, one goes to the tenant. So I'm trying to make it easier for officers to put them in a position to be a little more successful in how we enforce blight. Again, a little bit of his managing expectations. We've had blight in this town for a number of years. We're not going to solve it for months, but we're going to continue to evaluate, what are we doing? How can we do it better? That comes from input from the public, input from council. So we're continuing trying to self-evaluate, how can we make this thing better? How can we have a bigger impact on this?
How do you think we should move forward with the, maybe changing our ordinance to make it easier to work with?
First, it's going to start with a meeting with Chief Glass and I. I've already asked Kelly to do that, set that up for early next week. And he and I need to have a conversation on it and then we can get back with council.
Okay, thank you.
I got one quick question. So, and I don't know if Jeff can answer this or not, but when you, when you have, when you have to go like cut grass or tall weeds or something like that, isn't it just like a seven day notice and then you go do it and charge them? Can it be something simple like that for the police department where they don't have to jump through hoops? It's you get your notice and then you get a bill? And if it's, you know, a housing blight on a house that, you know, a landlord owns, he's getting that bill or it's tacked onto his taxes the same as if he's not cutting his grass?
I can explain the noxious weed ordinance, but I won't opinion on the rest. We, when we see or receive a complaint on tall grass, we send out a letter to the property owner and we actually give them ten days to bring it into compliance. And after that, we will have our staff cut it or we will contract some a local service to cut it if we don't have the staff available. And then, yes, they do get billed.
Well, I'm open to whatever we need to do to make it easier for them to do their job and not jump through so many hoops and, you know, you can educate people all day long, but in the end, if they're not going to listen, we need to like ramp it up. And I mean, I can give you three dozen houses that are blighted in a four block radius. Like, it's crazy.
Well, some of these homes, it's all junk around them. The homeowner or the renter can clean that up. And if it's the house with the windows falling out, then of course you jump on the owners. So there's two different stories there and it can be done real quick.
But a lot of the blight, and I agree with Councilmember Sipsec, a lot of the blight is abandoned homes or if they're not abandoned, they should have been because they're in terrible condition. And it's, you know, again, it's not just cutting the grass. It's almost, you know, tearing them down or somebody with amazing rehabilitation skills coming in, being able to salvage some of these homes.
I think working on our ordinance to make it more user-friendly by our police department will be of benefit. I'd be anxious to hear how that all works out. You want to move on with the council members?
Mayor Protem Schamanski?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes, Chief, do we take and still call when the street lights at night because a lot of them are burnt out? I ride a lot around and there's a lot of streetlights out and it's, you know, and I can tell you, fourth and Maple, Cypress and Clay. There's a whole bunch of them. I've been making a list. Doesn't the police department do that anymore?
We have in the past. I can make a note to our night shift. It's usually best at nights. We'll put that on our list so they can report back to DPW.
Okay, because you know, I ride around and I see all these things. Also, I wish, like to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving and have a safe holiday.
Councilman Grabowski, this is Jeff McCula. Consumers has a very easy way of reporting those and even
Right, we do that too, Jeff.
Right, and even when we get the Public Works gets reports, we just go to the website portal. And maybe I could post the link on the city's webpage and Facebook page so that residents, if they see a light out, it's a very easy process to have that reported. And then actually, when consumers receives that report, I believe they do a seven or ten day response on those and it works pretty well.
Yeah, they've called us back when they've done it. They're pretty good. Thank you.
I will do that.
Councilmember Martin Paniac?
Yeah, I just have one question, just an update on the construction on thirty-one, the sewer system. It's more for Jeff.
Yeah, I can give that update. This is one of those Murphy's Law things. If it can go wrong, it has gone wrong. We've got a thirty inch pipe. It's about three hundred feet long that was contracted to be lined. The contractor installed the liner and during the process of what they call cooking the liner, where they place high pressure steam in order to set the epoxy liner, a part of their machinery broke down. And when that happened, the liner was not cured fully and so it has sags in the top of the pipe. The contractor was pretty confident that reheating it in what they term as re-cooking it would cure that. So they had to have a special liner made in order to attempt that process. And when they attempted that process, it did not work. At that point, the traffic control was reduced down to just protect that one block where that thirty inch pipe is. And the contractor's in the process now of cutting by hand and with their personnel going up into that pipe and cutting out pieces of that pipe and then physically removing them. The company has been struck very severely by illness and specifically COVID. And they currently only have between one and two crews that can operate company-wide. And this is a firm that operates throughout the Midwest. So the process to cut that liner out has been very slow. They do have a new liner ordered and is being produced so that when they do get the old liner out that's failed, they can install the new one. And the process is very slow. And so they're anticipating that that won't occur until probably mid-December. They have been in contact with the Department of Transportation who issued the permit for the work on thirty-one. And MDOT has given them an extension of the permit. They've also, at our request, have submitted a snow removal, kind of an emergency response plan so that we can plow the highway. And in the event that we get a major snowstorm or something, there's a contingency plan on how to get those materials removed so that we can make it safe for the public.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Zalinski?
Thank you, Heather. Jeff, the lights look really nice downtown.
Thank you.
The Christmas tree is huge.
Yes, and we added a little bit of snow tonight to bring everybody into the season greetings period.
Thanks to guys for doing that. That really looks nice.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. I guess we're adjourned. Have a good evening.